And you know, no audio.
Pardon. We're without sound. Online.
How about now?
No.
I have sound.
You, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we got you.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, everyone, um, please speak into your microphone, make sure that it's all, that it's on, um, approval of the agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to change or modify in our agenda tonight? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? I'll move. Thank you.
And second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Doyle.
I.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Gina. Agenda approved. Nexus privilege of the floor. Would any member of the public like to speak to non-agenda items? I see that Jeff Lucas is here and also an iPad. Would either of you like to speak? Okay. Moving on. That little hand is our hand, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, budget review, first quarter fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Item A, review of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, budget to actuals.
Okay, I will start. So, beginning this fiscal year, staff will be providing quarterly reports about the fiscal situation of the city of Point Arena. With the end of the first quarter of the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, which is July one through September thirty, staff is providing an overview of budget to actuals, current grant status and potential cost-saving measures. Uh, one word of caution is that due to some revenues coming in in large chunks, like wastewater fees, some funds appear underwater or have no water at all. An example is the wastewater fund, which receives revenues twice a year, once in December and once in April. Thus, the fund shows no revenue currently, but will receive revenues in the second quarter. Another consideration is that we have had multiple projects that we have expended funds on and must wait thirty to forty day, five days for reimbursement, sometimes longer. For example, our FEMA reimbursement for the January storms has been submitted and we are waiting funds to backfill the approximately ninety thousand dollars that those storms cost the city. Additionally, there is approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars in Prop sixty-eight parks money we are awaiting as a result of the playground expenditures made in the first quarter. So, uh, looking at the general fund. Um, so generally, the first quarter report goal is to utilize no more than twenty-five percent of projected revenues and expenses. First quarter saw twelve percent of projected revenues and twenty-seven percent of projected expenditures in the general fund. Uh, the first quarter projected transient occupancy tax has not been included in this chart as they are not due until October thirty-first. Staff will try to have a solid number at the November first meeting and I will say, uh, we have collected approximately forty-two thousand dollars in T O T funding uh, in this last quarter, in addition to about another ten from the smaller ones. Um, let's see. Delays in funding sources such as cap, cops, grant funds from the county have limited our revenues for the first quarter. The intergovernmental grants line where the cops grant is recorded is for one and a half months, not three months. Um, regardless, expenditures are outpacing revenues. There's approximately a one-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit created as revenues are less than expenditures. Currently, costs of administration and recycling are higher than expected. Some costs of administration are recoverable through grants, but the amount is not enough to make a substantial difference. Recycling is dependent on grant funding as well, but as was discussed in the previous budget meeting, other sources of revenue need to be attained or the program ended.
Want to say anything about the general fund? Um, I just wanted to point out. I just wanted to point out the difference between the two schedules, the one that you just received and the one that's in your packet. I was asked to split out the debt service for the LOC and then the subsequent note payable, uh, that would occur in, in January. And so I've added two lines to the expenditure side of the general fund. You'll see debt service principal and interest. And those amounts, uh, were accounted for in the administrative, uh, budget. So, the administrative budget went down to three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars from the three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand that was actually programmed for the debt service. So, the actual numbers, right now, the actual is being charged to the capital projects fund uh, and not to the administrative, uh, department. So, if you look at the capital projects expenditures, that balance was reduced by the interest that has already been paid for the first three months of fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four. So, um, I just wanted to point that out. There's not like major changes to any of the other, there's no changes to any of the other numbers in the schedule.
Okay, um, can we talk about the debt service a little bit right now?
Yeah.
So I see we're at eight-point-nine-five percent on that. Is that a fixed rate or is it a variable?
Uh, it's set as a fixed rate, but I haven't seen any numbers from the bank yet. So, I don't know what they're gonna propose in terms of a total rate, if they're gonna wanna go fix or if they're gonna want a variable rate.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, so I picked the number that it's at basically right now. Um, the percentage rate that they're charging the city for the line of credit. Um, that percentage could go up or go down based upon what they consider to be their risk um, index for this type of lender lending.
Mm-hmm. And I understand we're trying to convert to a note?
Yeah.
And what kind of rates do notes have these days? Is it the same?
It's, that's a comparable rate for the market right now, since interest rates didn't go up um, today. Um, then, uh, you know, I, I believe that's a comparable rate. Um, but, you know, the, they're gonna be, um, closing the note in, in January, so they may wanna bump it up, they may wanna reduce it to give the city a break. I mean, it just depends on what their conditions of the lend, of the note are. Um, I did calculate it based upon a ten-year, um, amortization schedule, so that's what the amortization schedule is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we talked about doing a reset after five years. Um, so, they kinda wanna see how the city's paying back the debt. And so there might be an opportunity to get a better rate or to refinance it after five years.
Mm-hmm. So, um, our monthly payment is almost four thousand dollars, three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five and some change.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's a nice chunk over five to ten years. And if we could pay a little bit more each month, that would be move us in the long run. Not only would we pay down our, our principal, but we would also have a better track record with the bank and perhaps they would give us a better rate. So if we were gonna set a goal for what we pay every month in debt service, we could shoot for a bit more, four thousand four hundred?
Yeah, what you could do, so it's better if you're gonna pay more to pay it upfront to reduce the interest costs.
Right.
Over time. So, so I could redo the amortization schedule, assuming that the payment amount is forty-five-hundred dollars a month or something like that. Um, the, the initial split between that and, you know, they'll give you interest reductions if you have automatic payments out of one of their bank accounts. So, there's ways to get interest rate reductions besides paying it back sooner. And you want, you don't want any prepayment penalties or anything like that.
Right.
So, so the idea would be to try to, uh, you know, limit right now because of the city's cash position, you probably wanna go with just what the amount is until you get to a clear picture as to where your cash is headed.
Right.
And then, then you can start putting more money, um, on the note. Uh, what I would suggest, since you're only gonna have six months of payments for this fiscal year, is to go with the monthly for the first six months, see where you're at at the end of next year. And at the same time, putting extra money aside for it. So that when you get to the next fiscal year, you could either do it all at once or you could draw the payments down next year. Rather than having, um, you know, lump sum amount go into the note, you could, you know, subsidize the payments on a monthly basis.
Right. So if we were able to put, put that money aside instead of, well, for the next six months, if we could put that money aside, what kind of account would that be? What, would we call that a?
It's a, it's called a sinking fund.
A sinking fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Great. Um, well, I think once we get to our, um, item C, proposed cost-saving measures, perhaps we could find a way to actually do that.
Yeah, and, and the way, well, the way that you would do it is you would still budget the, the dollar amount with the added payments in it. And that would give you the, the room to set the money aside. So, you wouldn't spend it, so you could take it and reserve a portion of the fund balance
Mm-hmm.
to pay in the future.
Okay. Well, looking at the, um, Redwood Credit Union note portion of our packet here that we just got, I, I gotta say, I was pretty shocked to say that we're in it until twenty thirty-four. And, um, that's a lot of money that we're going to be paying, like a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. I think it was a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in finance charges. Um, and you know, I don't know why, but I, I thought we were throwing around the figure of being in debt until twenty twenty-eight and I could almost live with that, but I'm having a hard time stretching this out over the next, um, well, ten years. Um, I, I really wanna see us make a real concerted effort to pay this off sooner and not hobble subsequent.
Well, you have to have the money to be able to.
I know, so, you know, like, we're gonna have a really good discussion when we get to item C.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you for that, Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anybody have any questions that they would like to propose at this point? I have another one if, uh, if nobody else does. But I'll wait my turn. Uh, okay, uh, so I have a question about, um, fund reserves. I, I'm really having a hard time understanding. First of all, where are they? How much are they? Is there anything in the reserves? And if there isn't anything in the reserves, where did it go? And what are we mandated to keep in our reserve accounts?
Okay, so you're not mandated to keep anything.
Okay, that's one thing I wanted to know.
Um, and, and there is a, a distinction between cash reserves, which are for cash flow purposes and.
For what purposes?
For cash flow purposes.
Cash flow purposes.
And, and fund reserves, which are, like cash is, cash is a component of that, but it's, it's actually, all it is, is the excess of your revenues over expenses.
Mm-hmm.
So, so there is, um, uh, in terms of accumulating fund reserves, you have to have more revenue than you have in expenditures.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, right now, you're in a situation where your expenditures are exceeding your revenues, so you're, you're running a deficit position for, for, you know, setting aside any additional funds. And so there are no, essentially no reserves. Um, it's all being pulled from the unrestricted portion or the unreserved portion. And, uh, so that also kinda goes for the cash reserves as well because, uh, before, the city was pretty much putting its cash reserves in delay into the local agency investment fund.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that was an investment that the city set aside excess monies to, um, you know, kinda for a rainy day. That account is down to what? Three thousand dollars now or something like that. It's, it's very, very low. Um, and, and so it was drawn all the way down to basically nothing, which also means you have no cash reserves either. So, so the only way to change the direction is to have more resources than you have outflows.
Yeah.
So, more income or inflows of revenue and, and less expenditures. So, you either have to cut your expenditures or you have to raise different funding sources to, um, pay for the services for the city.
Okay, so let's take a specific, like, the wastewater fund, for example, that day. We had a, a reserve fund for wastewater. Is that, that's correct, right?
Uh, no.
No?
You didn't have any reserves in either of the two enterprise funds, so.
So our enterprise funds didn't have reserve funds?
They didn't have any set asides at all, no.
And I'm talking like pre-debacle.
Yeah, yeah, that's even before anything occurred.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Um, all right, anybody else? Questions? Inquiries? Um, Paul and I had a nice discussion yesterday and I got a lot of my questions answered, so, um, I don't feel like I have to bother you, Joe, with them, um. There was, uh, this major attachment too, with the big long sheets that were like really archery. And, uh, there was one, just one little thing in salaries and wages under capital projects of, uh, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars and seven cents. And, um, we were just guessing that maybe that was for Richard Shoemaker.
Yeah, I don't know who charged to that project, but it was probably, um, it was probably the plan update, the LCP update. Cause that's being charged to general contract. Uh, so, um, that's the only, only one that I think we had some carryover from the prior year. So, somebody charged a couple hours to it. And I think that may have even been in July. We're, we're looking at the payroll as far as how it gets posted because I had some questions on it as well in terms of who's getting charged where.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm, I was kinda questioning whether or not they're in the right place.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, that could just be a mistake or it could be something that's a holdover from, um, before. The other possibility is that it's, has to do with the general contract for the FEMA money. So, um, for the new FEMA grant. Um, but, you know, I, I would just be guessing, I'd have to look at the account.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Questions about our budget to actuals? Okay, let's keep going.
Yeah, well, let's move on to the peer. Okay, um, so due to the salmon fishery closure, city has not generated any revenue from either boat launches or landing fees for salmon season. City generally has a decent amount of sport fishermen launching during a normal salmon season as well as landing fee revenue. That is all lost revenue this year. A broad overview shows the peer spending a little more than three to one with eleven-thousand eighty-four dollars in revenue and nearly thirty-thousand dollars in operational expense. Uh, it's about an eighteen-thousand-dollar deficit, which is obviously not sustainable and hard choices need to be made. As some background, uh, boat launches for the quarter have generated only eighteen-hundred dollars in revenue. Based on current rates, the city has only provided forty-five launches for the quarter of three months. For frame of reference, the city charges forty dollars per launch with the standard launch and retrieval taking about an hour. Fully loaded cost of an employee hour at the peer is approximately forty-four dollars, thus each launch is losing at least four dollars, likely more as some, some launch retrieval operations take more time. City has received approximately seventy-five-hundred dollars in launch fees. This reflects that local fishermen are relying on ground fish and black cod instead of salmon, which is more lucrative. About half the landing fees have been revenue from merchant, which is a positive sign, but certainly not enough to pay for basic operations. Were there no urchin, as there has been in recent years, landing fees would have been approximately thirty-five-hundred dollars. First quarter revenue of eleven-thousand dollars equates to approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five staff hours in the quarter or ninety-two hours a month. Total payroll for the period was approximately twenty-seven-thousand dollars, roughly six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars hours for the quarter or two-hundred-and-twenty-five hours per month. This does not include other operational expenses such as supplies, utilities and other expenses. Again, unsustainable.
Do you wanna have a discussion about the peer now? Or?
I think we should get through the rest of this and save that for the end.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm afraid we'll get subsumed by it. Do you have anything you want to say about?
Yeah, I think.
So I just wanted to give you, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what the revenue is down there and what that equates to and how much revenue we bring in for the work that is done.
So, uh, any specific questions about peer revenue or expenses, anybody?
No.
Okay, uh, let's go on to wastewater then.
Wastewater's main source of revenue is sewer fees. Sewer fees average approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars per year and arrive in two tranches, December and April. The wastewater fund is expected to be in a deficit position due to sewer fees not being updated recently. The wastewater repair fund is currently in a deficit position due to two factors. First, the city has expended approximately seventeen-thousand dollars completing the installation of the wastewater plant generator, which was funded through a grant in a prior fiscal year. Another thirty-five-thousand was spent on engineering for the wastewater study, money that will be reimbursed by the state water board. Staff have ascertained the cost of a rate study would be approximately twenty-thousand dollars. That study is reimbursable under the wastewater study. Staff are working to secure the rural community assistance fund who performed our twenty-sixteen rate study.
So, if we go to the generator, um, didn't we get like a fifty-two-thousand-dollar grant or something? Did we expend all that and then have to pay seventeen-thousand dollars more?
No, no, so our grant we received from Cal O E S was for a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, that seventeen-thousand dollars was the installation, the electrical installation of the generator at the plant. So, the brand has paid for that, it paid for the generator itself, which was about ninety-thousand dollars. It paid for a, um, temporary, whatever word I'm looking for, uh, mobile generator, and that was about twenty-thousand dollars. There was additional, uh, electrical expense, um, for wiring those properly, about another fifteen-thousand dollars. I believe we have twenty-five-thousand dollars approximately left on that grant. That's a grant that we've already received the money. So, any expense we put out at this point for that will not be reimbursable. What I will say is that the money that is not spent on the grant is reimbursable to the state.
I, so we should.
The state will come back and take that money.
Yeah.
If we don't expend it. So either way, that's a source of, that's a twenty-five-thousand-dollar number that's out there that's, we're gonna pay.
If we don't use it.
Right. If we don't, exactly.
Is it, what, I mean, what the parameters of the spending of that, those funds?
So, that's something I wanna bring back. We're looking, they're allowing us to utilize that money for communications equipment if we want.
Mm-hmm.
And there has been discussion of, um, with the fire safety council of a repeater on the ridge that would allow everybody, all of us, to communicate with each other. And so that's, um, a high priority. And so they've allowed us to use that for that and they've also allowed us to use that funding to purchase a satellite phone, which is recommended by the sheriff's office. And so that money can be expended. The issue is we've already received the money, so we have to, let's put the money out at this point and there's no reserve for it, so to speak.
Right, it's not sitting in a fund somewhere. It's basically gone and we need to spend it anyway.
Believe.
Which is a big problem.
It's like monopoly money.
Yeah. Uh, okay, final thoughts?
Uh, no, we're just here to explain and answer questions.
Okay, well, gosh, I cannot wait to get into the part of the meeting where we, um, talk about proposed cost-saving measures, but we do have current status of grants before that.
Let me, um, spill that out for you, actually put that on the screen.
So in the, um, in the Point Arena grant status chart, the Cal O E S, here it is, emergency services, it's in here, a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand expended today. Oh, okay, it's all in here. Grant funding remaining twenty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-three. That we will have to pay back if we don't use.
Correct.
But we've used it for other things, so it's kind of a problem, correct?
Uh, you, you mean we've used it for what we need to use it for?
Right.
Yeah, with, except for the communications equipment.
Right. And how we, um, researched how much that repeater would cost and the satellite phone?
The satellite phone's approximately two-thousand dollars. And then the repeater, I'm not sure Jennifer's on the line, she might have, um, better info. My understanding was approximately ten-thousand dollars for the repeater and a hundred dollars, uh, um, more or less a hundred dollars a unit.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, does anyone have their hand up over there?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. So grant status?
Yeah, so let me um. Explain this. So we have a number of grants uh, that we have received over the last few years that we are working through right now. So I'll just go down the list so that everybody's aware of what um, we have currently. So we have the Prop sixty-eight Parks Bond, um, that's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar per capita grant. Uh, we have expended, that's expended, the data isn't correct. Whoops, sorry. We have sixty-six thousand dollars remaining on that grant. We're awaiting a ninety-nine thousand dollar reimbursement, and we've been reimbursed thirty. Thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the, that was for the tables and benches. The ninety-nine thousand dollars is for the uh, downtown park improvements. That funding expires at the end of September of twenty twenty-four. They've extended it. So that's funding we have available that we don't have to spend right now, I guess is the way I'm putting it, um, if we wanted to spend it. Um, the next fiscal year, we we could do that.
Yeah, for for grants like that, where you have a time period. You could plan when you're gonna spend that money. Hopefully it will coincide with with the time where your flesh. With cash so that you can um, spend that money and then get reimbursed. Three months later, so. Um, so it would, it would give you an opportunity to time the expenditures. Rather than putting the money out right away. So. So for grants like that, I I would hold off and plan when I'm gonna spend the money.
Definitely, because there is no time limit on the Prop sixty-eight Park Bond? Or is there a timeline?
Well, we have to, we have, the last report we turn in is on the thirtieth of September next year.
Next year, so we have until then to spend the money, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is the SB two, uh, which is for the um. Local coastal program update, the ADU ordinance, and then the other ordinance that's gonna be brought forward uh, at the next meeting. Uh, that was for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we've expended a hundred and six thousand of that. We've been reimbursed ninety-six thousand, and we have about a ninety-nine hundred dollar unpaid reimbursement that we're waiting on. Uh, so the remaining funds we have for that are fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-three. That um, funding was slated to end at the end of September. And we were able to work with uh, housing and community development. They had seen, we sent our final report, they had seen we had money left. They contacted us and told us that we could extend out some of the work. Click completing the ADU ordinance, such as the Coastal Commission work. Um, and they would fund that through that. They don't want us to lose all that money, so they're working with us to continue. Funding um, through the end of the year and possibly a little into next year, but that's not guaranteed. So that funding will run out. Um, in the middle of what we're doing with the LCP process, but we also have the next grant, which is the low. Local early action planning grant, that's a sixty-five thousand dollar grant that has not been utilized at all. And the purpose of it was to supplement um, what we did with the LCP process once those funds were expended or ran out. And that funding uh, is good again till the end of September of twenty twenty-four. And our consultant believes that most of the, that the Coastal Commission will likely have. Approved both of the amendments um, by that time.
I I'm sorry, I have a question. I I I apologize for my ignorance of any financial terms and and processes and and all of that. But uh, my, I I think I'm understanding that with the grant funding. If we have a grant for so much money. Um, you'd say we have, say we have five thousand dollars of a grant money. We need to spend five thousand dollars of money that we have. And then get reimbursed by the grant fund, is that what it is? We don't have the money in front, we have the money.
Oh, no, no, so the.
So that's, that's my confusion, I think.
Yeah, the Cal OES, and you'll also see the compost grant down here, we're given, that's not usual. But they were given to us in advance so that we can go and do the work right away. Um, the other grants, no, they're, we're eligible to, we're eligible to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the SB two grant. We may or may not spend that much, but that is the amount they'll reimburse us for the work.
So if we don't have the money, in the sense what we it, we're in debt for right now, is money that we. Thought we had. Or we, we have spent believing we were spending grant reimbursable money, and we've overspent that money? That's not reimbursed yet, or just overspent?
Well, on the uh, Mill Street and the uh, Cove Projects, we overspent. And that is a large part of why we don't have cash reserves right now.
And is there any way to recover those kind of funds?
Wish there was.
Yeah, unless you can get the grantors to give you an augmentation and. Tell you right now, they're not granting this.
Thank you, that kind of clarifies. I mean, it's it's hard to follow the. Ethereal financial stuff, I don't, I don't. Get there.
Uh, okay, so the next grant is uh, SWRCB, that's the Water Resources Control Board's wastewater study. So we received a grant uh, of up to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we have expended approximately three hundred and nine thousand dollars of that, been reimbursed two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And we are awaiting thirty-one thousand uh, three hundred and thirty-five dollars in reimbursements that we have. Sent in but not received the check yet. Uh, we have about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars left on that grant that will. All be utilized uh, over the next year. Um, the pro, the. Plans for the wastewater are at fifty percent. We have to turn them in at a hundred percent by the middle of next year, I believe. And um, we'll be expending all of that money. That reimbursement actually comes through within forty-five days is what I found, so. That's good. The other thing is we have not been expending much on that right now due to our cash flow issue. Um, but at some point next year, we will need to. Continue that on, um, we have to finish it. The point of that grant, so everybody knows, is that uh, that grant will provide us. Uh, shovel-ready plans for the rehabilitation of the sewer lines and part of the sewer plant. Um, that's funding that is uh, funded by State Water Resources Control Board. Um, so for each connection we have in town, we'll receive a set amount of money. Uh, the total of that will be the project amount that we have available for funding. That is something we will have to come back to discuss how we're going to do that. Um, but for the next, you know, for the next six months to eight, nine months, um, we'll be finishing up that particular grant. Any questions on that?
Does that include a rate study?
Yes, it does.
And as soon as we have that rate study. How quickly can we implement um, uh, a hike in sewer fees?
So, well, once we have a rate study, then we have to do what's called a two-eighteen process, which is you have to mail everybody that gets the bill. Say what we're doing and give them the chance to protest it, and if there's a certain percent that do, then. A different set of things happen, but generally there isn't, and so there's a notice public hearing. You do the hearing, you approve the rate study, which I believe modifies the ordinance by resolution. Or the new rates, and then I believe you have thirty days after that that you can start charging that?
No, um, because you charge on the tax roll. Uh, you probably wouldn't get it to the county until next year's tax roll, so when. There's a, I believe it's like a July deadline to get. To the county or the uh, next, next year's tax roll. So you wouldn't start seeing the revenue coming in until next year.
Okay.
I have a question. Why don't we? My understanding is at some point in history, this was turned over to the county. Because the city didn't want to deal with it, and I wonder if we decided to deal with it. Ourselves. And had the accounting so, resources to do it, we would have a monthly revenue rather than waiting a year to recoup it.
So let me just say something on that. My understanding of the history here is that we used to um. Charge monthly rates, and people got so in arrears and sewer. Sewer lines were being cut off because of non-payment, and it became such a hassle that the dis, the decision was made to put it on the property tax rolls. So that the property owner, excuse me, the property owner pays that tax when they pay all their taxes. As opposed to individuals paying a monthly fee. There it would, there was a lot of liens put on property during that period. Because people were, people were getting hundreds and thousands of dollars of bills that they had not paid. So I caution that idea, and it's also more of a administrative expense on our end for sure. Understand the point that you're making about the monthly revenues, absolutely, and you know, I wish they gave us monthly revenues, but. They only do it in two batches.
The other benefit of having the county um, put it on the tax roll is. They actually, in the December payment, they advance fifty percent. Of the total tax, the total assessment. Um, and then they settle it with the main payment, and so, so there's. Um, and for doing that, they get whatever gets sent through redemption, so. So what that means is that if um, any interest and penalties goes to the county. For late payment or whatever, but the city gets the money in December, so they get, actually get a fifty percent. Of the entire uh, amount that goes on the tax roll for that year. So for cash flow purposes, it's helpful.
I think we lost sound.
I just want to um, announce, I got a note from Gina, that Jennifer Smallwood reported the raised hand features disabled. And I. Don't know about that.
Should we just call on Jennifer then?
Yes.
Jennifer Smallwood, please, come to the microphone.
Okay, I'm here. I I can't find it, it's usually just right there on page. Anyway, um, I'm curious why is there a lapse? And raising the rates.
Jennifer, you you have some reverb, and we're not able to tell what you're saying. Do you wanna put it in the chat?
Turn off my speaker, and I bet you can hear me now.
Yeah, try now.
Yeah, you can hear me now.
Yeah, much better, thank you.
Yeah, I um. I'm curious to why there's not a more regular uh, raising of the rates for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, usage uh, for for property owners. It's uh, so much easier. To stomach a, a small, regular increase than. Oh, we haven't done this in six years, and now it's gonna be two hundred dollars more. Or uh, you you know, whatever, I don't know what it's gonna be that much or not, I have no idea. I'm just saying. Uh, it sounds like it hasn't been done in a while, and I'm not really sure why it hadn't been done in a while. And so maybe you could answer that, and then I'll feel better.
Okay, that's a good question. Thank you, Jennifer. So why don't we do rate hikes on a more regular basis?
So the last rate study we did was in twenty sixteen, and it provided a five-year plan for rates. And that ended in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. We haven't been able to obtain a rate study um, for a variety of reasons. One is uh, funding. I only just found out we could get reimbursed for it. And then also everything else that's going on, and so we should have had a rate study done in twenty-one, twenty-two, but we didn't. And we didn't have one done in twenty-two, twenty-three, and we will have one done in twenty-three, twenty-four, so there will be a, there'll be a two-year. There'll be two years that the rates have not changed, is one way to put it.
Does that answer your question, Jennifer?
Uh, it it does, it does answer my question, and I just, you know, I'm just saying, it's just so much easier to. To deal with a regular, consistent application of raising things than it is. I mean, I I I get it, that we're a small city, and there's way too much work for people. I I understand, nobody's like, okay, we're just gonna see how we can screw people. I I understand that that's not happening. I just wanna put it out there. It's it's harder to to hear, oh, we haven't done it a while because it hasn't really worked out. That's, that doesn't feel very comforting. But anyway, I understand, I understand, okay.
Okay.
The other thing too, with the rate study, doesn't mean you have to go with the rates that they propose. So if you do. See that the rates are like egregiously low and need to be raised. You can step that raise so that it's more achievable and just easier on the residents. So it's not the, you know. They do a rate study to see if you're in line with the costs, operate the plants and everything. Um, so, but again, that doesn't mean you have to go with what they recommend. And when you, when you do that, they can go back and give you alternative. Increase plans so that you can step it gradually, and then over time. It gets to where you need to be um, operationally, so, so. You know, it's not, uh, the rates aren't set in stone at a certain percentage of increase, so. Just because the rate study says that's what you need right now to cover your costs.
Yeah.
And since you haven't raised them for two years, I could see where that could be a hardship for people. To come up if the rates go up by three hundred percent. You know, that's like, no way. So, so what you would probably wanna do is make it gradual so that you get to that point in five years.
And it's a break-even rate. We're not making money on wastewater, is that correct?
Well, so, so there are components to the rate, so. The the rate has an operational component to run the plant, but it also has a capital component associated with. Replacing it. And and so that capital component could mean that you're starting to build reserves. So that when it comes time to, you know, build a new plant or expand or whatever. You have the money for it. So it's not, and then that way, as long as you have that in your rates. It it keeps the money flowing through so that you can keep your operating costs. At the lowest point possible to be more efficient. And and that way, you know, the cost to cover. Those isn't, you know, this large rate because. You know, you you wanna recover a deficit from the past.
Right, e- except that now that's what we have to do.
Right, but you're, but you're gonna build, you're gonna gradually eke at that deficit until it goes to zero. And then starts building reserves.
Yeah.
So.
In the best of worlds.
So I will say the last rate study, I don't think. Jim, you might have been on the council when that rate study was voted on. It was like in, before the election in twenty sixteen, so that was the last time it was done. As I remember, the rates were forty-nine dollars per ESD at that time, and the. Plan was to ra, they gave us two options. One was more drastic than the other, and the council went with the less drastic one, which was to raise it to like sixty-four dollars. And then there was about a five percent increase over each year. Of those five years, and now it stopped because we need a new rate study. But so like Joe said, you have options as to whether to go more aggressive or less aggressive.
And the other thing you can do with rate studies is. Um, anybody that does the study could give, give you increases based on the consumer price. give you increases based upon the consumer price impacts for this area. And that way, you know that the rates will at least cover the increase in the costs over time.
Okay, should we go on to the C D B G Technical Assistance Grant?
Yeah, yeah. And we have Jeff Lucas on the line here if he wants to chime in at all. So we have a Community Development Block Grant Technical Assistance Grant, uh, in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have expended approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars to date on that. We have received a reimbursement of seven, nearly seventy-five thousand dollars and are awaiting another thirty-two and a half thousand dollars in reimbursement. And we have a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar in grant funding remaining. We will be bringing, and right now we are not doing anything on this grant. Any engineering or architectural work's been put on hold pending some changes potentially. So at the next uh, city council meeting on the fourteenth, we'll ha, we will bring this item back with an explanation of where everything is at and have some discussion about where we want to move forward with it. I think there might be some opportunities to downsize or lessen the cost of the project, project. And we have, uh, received some info from housing and community development that will encourage us to continue. The, the grant fund is supposed to run out soon, but our representative, uh, has assured us that we can receive more funding after that ends so that we can finish the project. Uh, we do have a meeting, we had a meeting with that representative and, um, Jeff, myself, Jason from S H N, uh, we went through that and it sounded really positive. I don't know if Jeff has any more he wants to say on that part of it.
And this is for the V F W Hall?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Um, thank you, Paul. I would just add that the, uh, the state is wanting us to complete the work to lay the groundwork for the, the next stage, which is of course then, then the build out of the, of the, of the new facility or the, the improvements to the existing facility. And so they understand that, that there's more work to be done, but, but there's been modifications, uh, based on the, some changes in the, in those who have been participating in it. So long story short, they're working with us. We'll have more for you. But it's encouraging that state's actually working with us to problem solve on this one. And, uh, we also hope that the city gets reimbursed soon for those funds that have been you know, put out, uh, for, uh, the architect for his good work so far.
Uh, I noticed Jennifer had something in the chat.
I can't see the chat.
You can't see.
Gina, can you read the chat?
Say again, please.
Could you read what's in the chat? I can't get access to it here.
Yes, okay. Jennifer Smallwood question. But didn't the finance guy say that there are no reserves in the water treatment bucket? So where is the capital fund money?
Uh.
Sure I'm understanding that.
So did we have any capital fund money before we went sideways financially? Did we have any capital fund money in the wastewater treatment plant? Reserve fund or?
There, there weren't any. There weren't any reserves for the capital part of the fund.
Because the rates were too low for so long, we're, we're going into deficit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so what? Even, and, and I can't tell because I didn't look at the stud, the rate study. Depending upon who does the rate study, they may just want to be, may just want to cover the operating costs. So, so, um, and I, I've seen other rate studies where they have a capital component, but it's, it's too low to replace. So there's, there's varying methods that can be used when you do a rate study. And I'm just referring to the way that I do them. I build in a capital component. So, so there, it could be that, you know, that plus not having raised rates for two years. You know, could, could have caused the deficit.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Jennifer, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Coastal Commission.
Uh, so the, yes, the Coastal Commission Grant of a hundred thousand dollars for the sea level rise study. That is pretty much expended. Um, and we received a presentation at the last meeting about it. Um, there is approximately eighteen thousand dollars in remaining funding and that's funding that will be used. We have to, um, update our L C P A Community Health and Safety Element, um, to incorporate these findings. So that's what that money will be utilized for. Uh, it looks like Gina has her hand up.
Yeah, we have another question in the chat. This is from Douglas Berkey. When did funds stop being put into the capital fund reserve?
For wastewater?
For wastewater? There was.
Yes.
There was no, um, okay. So this is again, we're talking about accounting definitions. So there was no reserve or set aside for the capital component. The, so there's, there was, you know, it wasn't like somebody just decided to stop putting money aside for replacement. It's, there were no reserves to begin with. So, um, about the only thing I can say is if you, you look at the financial statements versus the, the quarterly statements that I'm presenting, this is just the revenue and expenditure side. It's not the balance sheet side. And all that means is that that's where the assets are. And that's also where you would show reserves. And, and since there were no, no funds, no excess funds, you sent the, the fund into a deficit position. So it, it looks like you have all these assets, but you don't have anything available to replace it.
That's hard to understand.
Yeah, it, it's because it's an accounting concept. So, so in order to, to look at it from a practical way, you, so you have, you, you own your car and that car, you may have a loan on it. And so you, you have money in the bank account to pay the loan. And yet you have this car as an asset. You have the money in the bank is an asset. And then you have the loan, that's the liability. So the difference between the asset and liability is your personal fund balance. And so each fund has a fund balance, has basically a personal fund balance. And in the wastewater fund, the wastewater fund accounts for all of its assets and all of its liabilities. And what little cash it has goes to pay for the operations and purchase assets and pay debt. Cause there's a, there's a small loan in the wastewater fund from way back where the revolving loan fund lent money to it to do the sledge removal. Yeah, and, and so, so that, that left the fund with very little in its fund balance. Not enough to cover its assets. So, so that's why when, when you, you record or you show depreciation in that fund, it's to help you establish reserves. But even then, all it's doing is creating a bigger deficit because you can't cover your operations.
So how does something like a wastewater operation increase its, increase its revenues to stay afloat?
It raises its rates.
Okay, and yeah, okay.
Okay.
And we're behind on raising our rate.
That's right. So I understand that.
Our deficit is growing.
I understand that. Yeah, I just, it's just the terminology. I get lost in the terminology, all the different levels.
Yeah, it's, it, you can look at it. Even for, for general fund operations or anything, it, it's how are you going to fund the expenditures?
Right.
And so it's the same for wastewater, it's same for the pier, it's same for anything that you provide services for.
Right. So essentially is, is, if I take it to a personal level, you know, an individual instead of all these levels with everything.
Right.
If I'm out overspending my income.
Yeah.
I, I have more expenses than I have income for. I have to increase my income.
Right.
It's that simple.
Yeah, that's exactly, or cut your expenses.
Or cut your expenses.
Yeah, so you have more money in the bank.
Right. So that's the point.
Yeah, and the money in the bank is part of your reserve.
Right. The money in the bank is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Just a quick question on the, uh, on the wastewater plant in, uh, two thousand and sixteen, is that when the rate study and the, the increases, the, the rates were increased? And, and you had mentioned the, uh, the sludge removal. Did that happen at the, at the sa, at the same time in the rates?
Sledge removal was, I want to say like ten years ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Okay, and, and so, uh, is there a, a determined cycle for sludge removal? I mean, it's something that it builds up and.
That's something that needs to be discussed, yes.
Okay, so that would be discussed in this, uh, when we do a, do a, do a rate study.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. So I, I have a question about the C D B G, uh, uh, twenty-five hundred, twenty-five, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. It's, it says completed here. Is that, is that, is that correct that we've?
It says allocated in progress.
So there's two C D B Gs. The one you're talking about, we haven't gotten to yet.
Okay, but the.
We're on the C D B G Technical Assistance Grant, the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and well, the, my question about that, it's, it's, it's currently kind of on, on hold.
Yes.
Okay.
Pending council action, probably at the next meeting, direction provided where you want to go with it.
Okay, and so, yeah, so I know that more money was allocated than C D B G was, was, uh, it was than the grant. So that's money out of pocket that we've, uh.
It's money that's budgeted. We have not expended yet.
Okay, and we don't have, we don't have the cash to, to expend it.
Certainly not.
Okay. Well, so i- is there gonna, uh, and things have changed since then with regards to senior needs with, uh, with the, uh, Walla La Community Center study for, for, uh, their needs and the seniors are a part of it. And, and I guess when we, we address this and then in the next meeting, the
Yes.
our November meeting.
We're going to talk about the whole project and what it looks like, what it is right now and where we want it to go.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Doug Berkey still has his hand up and Jennifer has something in the chat that Gina will relate. So Doug, did you just leave your hand up from last time or do you have something else to say?
No, I, I, I did have something to say.
Go ahead.
Uh, it was concerning the wastewater, the, um, capital fund. I, I remember from when the last rate study was completed and approved and such, that there was a percentage of, of the, um, monthly rate that went towards a fund. So when things broke or needed to be replaced, there was a, a fund that had been building. The same with, uh, with the sludge removal, there's a certain percentage that goes into it each time. And I'm wondering, um, you know, what has, did that change and why and how?
Okay, uh, so, yes, the sewer fees that come in are split eighty, twenty. So eighty percent goes to operations and twenty percent goes to, uh, repairs. Or capital replace, or capital replacement.
And, and so um, we're, we're, are we being told now that there, there is nothing in that fund?
Okay, so, so the way that works is that's just the portion of the assessment that's put towards the cost or the repair and replacement fund. And the expenditures on repair and replacement have been higher than the accumulated twenty percent set aside in revenue. So, so there is no, um, there is no reserve, um, for capital replacement.
I, I see.
In practice, when, um, our tranche of money comes in for, um, wastewater from the county, in practice, we would put twenty percent in capital repairs and eighty percent into everything else that needs to be paid for. But if everything else that needs to be paid for is higher than eighty percent, then we eat away at that twenty percent. Is that what, is that what happens?
No, not necessarily because we'd still, if, if you don't spend the twenty percent, then you'd have, you'd start establishing reserves for capital replacement.
Okay, so what are we looking at in December when that money comes in? And we get that chunk of money for sewer rates? What are expenses that we need to cover?
Okay, so right now, if you look at the, um, this sheet, the budget to actual, the, you look at the wastewater fund, you can see the capital costs right now are sixty, roughly sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, which one are we looking at? Because mine says fifty-four.
Yeah, it's the one that we just.
The one we just passed out, okay.
Yeah. So. Yeah, it's the so you see the capital cost line shows sixty-four thousand nine sixty-two.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. No, I'm not seeing that. No, when you just passed out, it's a three-page line.
The last page.
Last page at the top.
Operating cost, capital cost goes to that line.
Yeah.
No, okay, so operations, it says two hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah.
Capital fifty-four thousand. That what you have? Okay.
Okay, so, so that's the revenue side.
Oh, I see. Capital cost sixty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, so that's the expense side.
Gotcha. So higher than what's coming in.
Well, right now, because you haven't received any payments for the property tax assessments, you, you don't have the fifty-four thousand dollars that would go against those capital costs. But you can see it's already in a deficit position.
Yeah.
So, so that means that, you know, you're spending all the funds, you know, within three months of the fiscal year primarily because you haven't raised the rates.
Right, okay.
And so really, I, and I, Paul, you can correct me, but I believe the grant is reimbursement of some of those costs, so.
Yes. I think mostly the wastewater repair fund has been basically the wastewater rate, the wastewater study that we're doing. That's where it's been.
Yeah.
The money comes in and out of. The money comes in and out of.
So if you add that to the fifty-four thousand, if you take a hundred and four thousand. And if that's the total that you actually collect. If you've already spent sixty-five thousand dollars, so you're eating away. At those capital. Assessments.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, Gina, did Jennifer have something that she wanted to have you read?
Yes, one moment. Um, Doug also asked me to share screen on what you guys are, are doing now, what you guys are looking at now. So I'm putting that up. So these figures here, Doug, okay. Um, oh, now I can't see the chat. Paul, can you hop on and read Jennifer's comment, please, about wastewater, um?
I can't because I'm sharing too.
Oh, okay. There, there you go, there you go, Jennifer.
Oh, look, there's a hand raised too. Maybe that's, uh, anyway, okay, I just, the, to comment, like, how to, how does, how do you make more money? Um, what some waste treatment plants do is they modernize. And then they produce energy and then they sell energy back to the grid and then they're like actually making money. I know we're little, but I, I think it's worth looking into as a, as a grant. I mean, we obviously need to, to modernize, I mean, the plant stinks all the time. And, you know, we're, we're losing money because the rates are too, you know, not whatever. I mean, I just think there's more things to do than just say we can raise the rates. We, we can look at modernizing and we can look at writing grants. To do that and to, uh, look at how other entities make money and, uh. Take care of their wastewater treatment plants. I, I think, feel like we have to just go into a hole and just say. Okay, we just have to bite the bullet and charge people more money. I mean, we have to charge people more money, but that's not the only thing to do. That's, that's it.
Thanks, Jennifer, that was a great suggestion. I'm making a note. And Doug, you have your hand up?
No.
Uh, I, okay, so you're good, Doug? Okay, great, all right. Yes?
I, I, I have a specific question having to do with, with wastewater and it's, uh. It's about a, a hookup that was supposed to happen, uh, many years ago. Uh, when Lauren Senate was the, the mayor here, uh, and a, uh, a connection across. The Highway One, uh, you know, uh, here was, was in, in the, and it was never hooked up and fees aren't being charged. Et- et cetera, on this particular, uh, project, and I'm wondering if there's more than one place out there where. Uh, do you want to mention the specific, uh?
I think we all know where it is.
Okay, well, I'm just, things, things like that where, where, you know, or there's a big hole in our bucket where we're not getting monthly rates and monthly fees. And I don't know if the, if the, uh, the hookup fees have been paid, et- et cetera, and so, you know, I think that. Uh, situations like that we need to address because, you know, why should some, everyone else pick up a higher fee? When not all the fees are being collected.
So we do, uh, every year we receive the tax rolls from the, this is what Joe was talking about earlier, we receive from the Otter's Office, the, um. Tax rolls, information for the sewer fees, and each year we do a study, we figure out. It's basically new businesses that increase the, um, charges that we provide on the paper, property tax rolls. Based on the use of the property, so a restaurant pays whether for ESDs, which is an equivalent sewer district. Which means a single-family home. So they pay four times what a homeowner pays because of the amount of water and wastewater that. With the amount of wastewater generated and also because of the grease infiltration, um. When we do that, rates either, they can, our, our income can either go up or down depending, but it doesn't change very much. Uh, because you're talking maybe a few connections. What we have currently on the rolls, I believe, is accurate. We do have one, actually more than one parcel that is not hooked up to any connection. That is paying sewer rates right now, and so it's. Is there a big problem with people not paying their sewer fees? I don't believe so.
Okay.
Based on the fact that we do have to every year look at. Who has what, um, you know, and the residences are always going to have one unless they're multifamily residences, they're not going to go off the roll unless. They disconnect, which nobody ever disconnects.
And short, short-term rentals, uh.
Property owner pays the tax.
Okay, and it's just this, the same as a residential. Tax.
Whoever owns the property pays the tax.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. So, uh, we covered Coastal Commission, Office of Emergency Services, we talked about installing the generator. Was there anything else to add to that particular grant status? Oh, yeah?
No, there's not.
Okay, uh, compost grant, we have twenty thousand in there.
Yeah, so this is a pre-funded grant that gave us the money upfront last year. Um, this is supposed to be used to help implement the composting regulations of SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, I'll say that the mayor and I met with some people who were very interested in composting and that was a very positive discussion. So I'd anticipate that we, um, will be utilizing this money early next year, I hope, uh, at the latest. It does, the funding for that does expire, um, on five to twenty-four. And again, if we don't expend the money, we send whatever we haven't expended back to them.
How can you use that?
Uh, we have two grants that are completed, the CDBG COVID grant, um. We expended two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we reimbursed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um. To, and those were for the loans for the businesses in town, um. The CDBG provided due to layoffs during COVID. Um, and then the Regional Early Action Planning Grant, uh, was another housing grant that we fully expended. That money was expended on the work, uh, for the ADU ordinance prior to Linda Roofing coming on board. It was the original, um, amendment that was sent to the Coastal Commission, that we received the letter back, a lengthy letter. And that's where Linda took off from. Uh, there are two other future grants available, um, to us, one is the SB one LPP Formula Grant. That we receive every year, we're allocated two hundred and thousand dollars every year, um, for the next two years. Uh, this is an ongoing, um, program, it's been used to rehabilitate Port Road, Riverside. Center Street and then the LPP Competitive Funded Mill Street. So what we are looking at, um, the next project is, uh, the Windy Hollow Road Project. And we have five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars available at, uh, California Transportation Commission for that. We have a match of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is funding that MCAG, uh, has about eighty thousand dollars a year. Set aside for us and we have about three years of that funding that would be utilized, and this is how we've done it in the past. We've utilized that money at MCAG to pay for the match on the projects that we do. Um, and then that's something that has been allocated and, um, programmed. It's not something we're going to get to do before the end of the year, so I will be filing an extension of the allocation. Because we have not been able to put it out to bid yet. Um, and then the MCAG Planning Grant is funding, we have available fifty-four thousand dollars for a. Right now, it's programmed for a parking study downtown, uh, but we have not begun that process at all. But that is money that is available to us through the end of the fiscal year. And that are, that is where we are with grants currently.
Okay. Any further questions about grants?
Any grant information about the pier?
Actually, I do have one more thing about grants, and that would be the FEMA, we didn't put that on here. But so, we will be, uh, receiving funding. Gina and I have been working, mostly Gina, with FEMA on, um, the reimbursement process, there are different types of reimbursements. Uh, we have filed for the category A reimbursement, which was for all the work that was done by staff and contract. In the two-week period after the storm, after the first storm, and that was all the tree removal, debris cleanup. Uh, we will be reimbursed that money that we've put out. And then. Um, and so we're getting back about ninety thousand dollars there, we also have another set of funding that we're working on right now. Which is for emergency protective measures that we undertook, it's probably another ten thousand dollars there. And then we get into the various projects that may be created by FEMA for us to rehabilitate different things. Um, like on the pier, the wastewater plant, the streets, um, those are longer term and we don't know anything about those at this time. And those will probably be, those would be, you could equate those projects that we come up with, not the size of them. But the fact it's a project to what happened at the Cove in twenty seventeen, we had the parking lot project and the piling project came out of those. What will come out of the FEMA this time, I don't know.
I have a question about some grant funding processes, um, when you mentioned emergency protect, uh. Pro- preventative, um, measures from FEMA, would some of those grant funds be able to be transferred to other? Fun grant projects, like say the repeater project and the, the sat phone? You know, like from FEMA, get, from FEMA's grant, could that apply to this other area?
Well, the FEMA reimbursement will go into the general fund. Because that's where we funded all the repairs out of, so, and once it's back in the general fund, then it's available for.
Oh, so then it would be able to be used for the repeater first, that's my question.
If the council decides.
I mean, I'm just, just, I mean, I just picked those things because they were in my mind, but we could come up with things like that. If you have, uh, more money in a grant fund than we're actually have allocated for, or.
It depends on the grant.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, let's move along. Um, proposed cost-saving measures, item C. Paul, do you want to start with the sheet that you gave us or?
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna bring that up too for everybody out there. Hold on one second, sorry. Okay, gives me no great pleasure to go through this, but, uh, there's some serious decisions, I think, that need to be made. To keep this, keep us from going into bankruptcy, to be honest, um, so. These are things that were discussed among different people, ideas, um, that have been come up with for cost savings. And so I will, uh, start with the pier. Um, some questions maybe to ask is, does the city make the pier a part-time operation? Do we close the pier for a particular season? Do we raise the rates further? Does the city start charging for parking and other options down at the pier? I'll say that the status quo, um, given our overall financial position, definitely cannot continue. We can't continue to subsidize the pier with fifty thousand dollars a year. Should be noted that with current trends, the pier will lose more than fifty thousand dollars here, making the financial situation more dire. The pier has been my greatest source of frustration. For a variety of reasons, and I, I'll be honest, I don't know what to do down at the pier. Because it seems every time we try to do something cost-saving wise or revenue generating. It's met with. Negativity by the fishing community and I would say. Nothing from the staff as far as actually. Implementing what we're trying to implement down there, there's so much pushback in the pier and I feel. We are expending a vast amount of money subsidizing a particular industry in town and we can't do that. We really never should have done that, but we definitely can't do that now, and I don't know what to do short of. Reducing the hours at the pier. Closing it part of the year, closing it all together, I don't know, but it's just financially not sustainable. And there's no real effort by the users of the pier to want to support the cost of operations at the pier. The other thing is that the pier is, the fishermen have an interest in the pier, but they're not the only ones. And so I sometimes feel like we operate the pier for the fishermen, but they're a user of the pier. And they're using the pier to launch their boats to make money legitimately. But it's a service we provide, they would not get into the water if we did not provide that service. And we are not charging what the cost of that service is. So, I, I look at personnel costs at the pier are out of. They're out of configuration with what we're bringing in. We bring in approximately forty thousand dollars a year to the pier every year. And we have expended, oh, ma- we've expended a little less, we haven't expended ten thousand dollars of that yet. But we've expended thirty thousand dollars of the revenue we expect this year. I'll also say I'm not confident of the numbers we have for revenue for landing fees because we don't have a salmon season. That was a large contributor to our, um, financial position. I need the help of council. Figuring out what to do about the pier, and I think it's a really, it's critical that something happened. We can't continue doing what we're doing down there and short of a drastic measure, like closing it all together, which nobody wants to do. I don't know what we do other than say, your budget's forty thousand dollars for the year. Because that's what you bring in and make it work, and if you run out, we close. I mean, th- these are realistic possibilities, given the situation. Again, nobody wants to hear that and I will be crucified, I'm sure, in town tomorrow about it, which is fine. Because we need to get our financial situation together or we won't have a financial situation.
Okay.
So I would be interested in hearing people's opinions on pure.
I'll start off, um. The pier, uh, it, it doesn't run exclusively for the fishermen and it's a asset to the city. It bring, it's a financial, uh, asset and a income genera- generator for the businesses. All the businesses in Point Arena and, um. We need to, uh, be, promote our pier to make a, a real economic driver. And just recently I was talking with Visit Mendocino and they did not even feature us on their website. They had no idea that the pier was there or the businesses were down there and they are our. Uh, first line of defense and bringing people to the area to spend money and. Enjoy our assets, things like the pier, so doing, now I got it on there, i- it is now featured on the Visit Mendocino website. But it hasn't been there for decades, I mean, come on, that's crazy. And we need to, um, do as much outreach as we can to make the pier known, used, appreciated. And paid for, um, but on a more practical note, um, I would say that. Charging for parking it down at the pier is something I think is a great idea and, um. You know, it would take a lot of fine tuning to make it work because what about, how do you? Like get a, a truck with hauling a boat through one of those. Arms, you know, without it coming down on the boat, you know, like there's a lot of fine tuning, but we could do it and, um. You know, what about employees at, at the Chowder House and the other business where, how would they, would they have to park? You know, would they have to pay every day for parking? Well, we could have passes for them, I mean, there's ways to do it, but I think that charging for parking is a good idea. I also think that limiting the hours of employees to twenty-five hours a week is a, um. Practical, uh, way to go because in any business. Practical uh, way to go because in any business. Payroll is your biggest expense. And we need to cut down on payroll and I'm just keeping my eye on the prize of that debt service that we need to pay. Where we need to bring in forty five hundred dollars a month only for debt service. And in addition to that, we have to run a pier. So something's gotta budge and I believe that limiting employee hours to twenty five dollar. Twenty five hours a week is one way to do that. Um, there's also a lot of tightening up of little things. Like we give free water there, um, people come in and wash their cars and do whatever. And we really need to get a coin operated meter.
Absolutely.
On the water that's at the green shed as well as curtail the use of um. The pure faucet that's at the foot of the pier. I think that's easily done and would tighten up our water um. Bill because water is expensive. Uh, I would ask for more accountability at the pier office and that directly involves the employees. With um. Charging the credit card fee when people charge their boat launch on their credit card. Uh, we have a policy that they pay the credit card fee. We really need to do that. Because when we don't, we're losing more money than ever. Shower tokens need to be only used for showers and not used as money. Lift fees need to be um. Respected and enforced. And um. Paul mentioned a foot pedal on the fish cleaning station for the water and so it's not kept running all the time and I think. Just little things like this. Tightening up our operation is really important. And you know, it's going to take a change in the culture at the pier. It's always been kind of very laissez faire and. A camaraderie with certain fishermen and peer users and surfers. And it's great to have that camaraderie, but not at the expense of the city.
And the longevity of the.
And longevity of the pier, uh, we we have to like. Have our eye on the prize that we're all in this together to make the pier sustainable and viable. Making the pier a part time operation. Is uh fraught with pitfalls. I mean. You never know what day is a good day to send people out on the ocean and you want to be there for them when they want to go out. Closing for a season, same problem. I mean, in principle, we would like to see more people doing. Launches with a different point of view, not just for fishing, but maybe for tourism. You know, send people out whale watching, send them out to see the different coves, you know, like seeing the land from the ocean side is a revelation. And people would love to do that if they had the opportunity. And they could leave from the Point Arena Pier and currently we don't have anybody. Offering that service, but it's there for the taking. Somebody could do a really great job at it and we have Billy Arana who has um. His kayak um, business and that is. Kind of in the spirit of what I'm talking about, getting people out on the water. Enjoying the ocean, wanting to do it again and again, bring their family, bring their friends and you know. Pay um, somebody to do that for them. Not everybody has a boat. Most people don't. They don't know how to sail anyway. Raising rates, Paul, you were talking about it costs at least forty four dollars to launch a boat. And we only charge forty, so we need to charge forty four. And at least, and I I hate to do that because I know that. Fishermen are really sensitive about having the rates raised. But we cannot subsidize anybody anymore because we're gonna go broke. And um, the pier is already horribly in arrears. And not getting any better. So uh, we need to revisit that. I mean, we just did the rate sheet and. Really, I think everybody was pretty supportive of the race that we put forward. But when I hear that it costs more to launch than we're bringing in, I have a problem with that. And we really need to have a break even point. So um. I could go on and on, but I wanna open it up to other people. So anybody else have anything to say about the pier?
Um, could I say something? So Paul, I was looking at this uh, city of Point Arena hours, wages and costs by code. And when I'm looking at the pier. I guess it's not the column, it's the row. You see, when you go across and you see the twenty three nine oh seven, that's total wages.
Yes.
In thousands.
That is the the number twenty three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and thirteen cents. The total amount of wages we paid for the eight hundred and twenty two hours of work.
Right, but.
In the first quarter.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm well, I'm just looking at the truck, but what stands out to me. Is that's that's the biggest figure except for administrative costs.
Yes.
And if it doesn't make any money.
Yes.
That's a big hit.
Yes.
I am to how to solve that problem, I'm not sure, but obviously. It's you're, you know. You're on the wrong path there. And I think, I think Barbara was your idea to cut the hours back twenty five a week or something. At least we could reduce that figure.
Well, like I said, in any business payroll is the biggest expense and when you start going sideways. The one thing you have to do is cut your payroll costs. And you know, if that means that it's a little dirtier down there or whatever, then so be it.
You know, there's other ways to to deal with some of that. I was thinking about that today about. You know, with the issue of of cleanup and and employees. You know, there's a lot of things that I've seen happen in different places where people adopt a trash can or a plant or. Or you know, a stall or something like that. I mean, in barns and in in horse facilities, people do that. They adopt a a shed row where the stores to help clean the stalls, for example, just to. Or to keep the facility open and working and happily so because the facility of. Is a uh, asset to everybody and and uh, you know, something everybody enjoys. And I think it's possible then with the amount of people who. Who love the pier and propose to purport to love the pier, I think that that's something that we could look into.
I I think that um, I think that's all, all of those are good ideas that. I mean, this is just a. The pier is like a perfect example of the the our city problem at large. And.
Yeah.
We just, we simply need to raise revenue.
Yeah.
And that's probably gonna be parking. And some other things. Because we have no choice. And. You know, I don't care what it is, if it's Muir Woods or wherever you go, you you pay to park. And it's just part of the real world and and. Do you think does everyone loves, I always hear about how much everyone loves Point Arena. I mean, what's gonna happen if we don't make it work? Do you think the county is gonna take better care of us than we're trying to do ourselves? It's it's not gonna happen. So we we need to raise, we need to raise some revenue. Throughout the town in as many ways as possible. We're not gonna be able to volunteer our way into the black.
Gina has some chats, I think.
Things in the chat, Gina, can you read them to us?
Yeah, there's a comment from Jennifer. Um, she's asking because all businesses in town can see that conceivably benefit from the pier. Is there a way that businesses could pay an additional fee or send part of their business fees to the pier? Um, and she followed up, um, or businesses and residents could adopt some aspect of caretaking the pier. From iPad, excuse me, there was a a question, what do bathrooms and trash cans have to do with the pure budget?
Everything.
Everything.
Uh, we have public restrooms on the pier that need to be maintained and they do have showers and a lot of people. In the community who don't have access to a hot shower, use the pier as their shower facility. And um, the showers are run on tokens. Um, trash cans are to keep the area clean. We have picnickers, we have beachgoers, we have people who fish on the pier. Uh, as well as fishermen, everybody needs trash cans. That is a lot of what. We need to maintain down there to keep it um, a nice visitor access facility.
So there was a follow up comment, um, they should be under Parks and Recreation. They do not have to be on the pure budget.
We don't have a Parks and Recreation. Component here. Uh, the county has a Parks and Recreation and there's a Parks and Recreation. District, but they do not have anything to do with the Point Arena Pier. We are independent and solely responsible for ourselves.
So I do take the point, the point that was made there. And we can look at reconfiguring things around. I, to be honest, the amount of time that should be spent by peer staff, keeping the area clean, the bathrooms clean. I don't see goes above two hours, to be honest, to do the basic stuff. And so we can take that out and give it to Parks and Recreation. It doesn't solve our overall budget problem at all. It gonna make the pier look a little better, but you're just moving money around. So I mean, we could not, we could have parks. Have the parks and streets folks do all the maintenance and cleaning down at the Cove and just have the pier separate. And then we won't have to spend as much money on it because we won't be doing all these ancillary things that the peer staff do that. Maybe another staff members could do for them. So that would be good because then we could drastically reduce the number of hours at the pier and maybe keep it within the budget. Just as the pier, because right now what has happened is the pier has been assumed to be the pier, parking lot, rock wall, bluff top. Parks. And there's always been a gray area of who's managing it. And that has resulted sometimes in nobody managing it. So I think we do, we should revisit. The issue of who maintains the Cove.
Yeah.
Itself as opposed to the pier.
So to delineate the the areas.
Exactly.
Be great. You know, the businesses in the pier and the parking and things like that would be a good idea, I think, rock wall, all of that. That's a good idea. I also want to say that I'd like to see, um, we've we've kind of skirted the parking, addressing the parking. Thing. I think that in a lot of communities, they have. Residential stickers for parking areas and we could charge parking. For non residential sticker thing. I I don't know how to. You know. I I guess, thank you, to articulate it, but to um, to create a a fa- uh, some sort of formula where we have. Residents have or. Somebody, some faction of the community have stickers because they, we live here, we we pay city taxes. And to facilitate this. Pro- this this area. And we have a parking fee for those that don't have it. I don't know how to maintain that. Uh, there are places that have parking entrances that are. Um, they have electronic little giga's that you can drive through if you have your sticker or whatever it is. If you're resident and and then if you don't have it, that you don't go through. And so, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to monitor and and facilitate that, but I think that. Having some sort of parking fee at the pier and the Cove Cove area, not just the pier. But at the Cove area would be a a good asset to the community and all and and to take that even further to the city parking lots. You know, that like at the theater, you know, for example, um. And. You know, and and make there be beneficial things for things like, you know, the using the uh. Charging station for electric vehicles and things like that. And also to monitor people parking in the electric parking places if they're not electric cars. That's that's kind of annoying, annoying. But um. All that aside, I think parking fees is something that we we could consider in these places in the city. And I think there's ways to achieve it too.
Part of the purpose of the parking study that we will hopefully do in the next year will be to explore that.
Yeah, anything else on the pier?
Any suggestions?
Somebody has their hand up. Oh, Gina, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that um, for the recycling and trash. Um, we don't expend that to the the pier fund. It gets expended to the recycling program. Um, when, so they're on their time sheets, that's where those hours go. So it'd just be the bathrooms that we were talking about. In response to the iPad comment.
Okay, thanks for that.
A quick comment, uh, Barbara, when you had, you had talked about that uh. That the the pier is a big component of people, visit Point Arena kind of a thing and I I think that's. That's really true and I think that uh. A business plan for uh, the pier area, you know, the rock wall property and. And the bluff on the south side of Arena Creek, it has been talked about before whether that could be. Uh, some kind of a visitor facility, whether it's a glamping thing, a uh. Weddings and that sort of thing. I I think it's been kicked around a bunch, but we've never really. Uh, dug into it and looked at uh. How that might work and I think that in a lot of ways, you know, there's a takes money to make money aspect to it. And obviously we're in the the that takes less money or the need for taking less money, but I think there are other ways. To look at it, including uh. Grants that might facilitate a lease sort of a thing to a business enterprise that would do something like glamping. Et cetera, but I don't, I don't think we've really. Uh, dug into that because we've, we've been trying to keep our heads above water on all this stuff. So I think we should. Uh, take time to really take a look at it.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, I, that's a great idea, Jim. I um, I just met some people that have a mobile glamping. Business in Mendocino County, they're based in Mendocino and they go to different areas in the county. With their big truck when they're glamping stuff and with to properties that make themselves available. To their business and they come in, pay a fee to to do that and have people come in. You know, give basically like a T O T, I guess it would be, I don't know. But um, that's an interesting concept to consider in instead of a permanent camping site. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, it's another source of revenue that we could uh, um, attract another business into the community.
Yeah, you should get their name.
I will. I will. Yeah.
Okay, do you feel somewhat directed?
We'll give it a shot.
It's nothing earth shaking, but we have to um. Really look at. The cost of.
Personnel.
Personnel, yeah, yeah. Okay, recycling, another big one.
Yeah, so the Cove recycling and used oil operations cost the city approximately fifteen thousand dollars a year. Grants cover about ten thousand dollars of that, although the used oil grant may not come in this year. Uh, does the city end the used oil and Cove recycling programs which provide a region wide benefit? Can the city begin charging non residents for recycling?
Well, wouldn't it be nice if we could, but there's no um, process for doing that. It's an enforcement thing and we're, we just never have staff that can do that. So I think charging non residents is a non starter. Unfortunately, um, but I think that we can funnel in. The times that these facilities are open and um. The used oil program doesn't need to be open twenty four seven and in fact. We got doors on the facility so that we can close it at night. And um, I think uh, if we're open five days a week for used oil, that's plenty. And. I I did talk to Mo Mo Hearn about the um, the grant, the used oil grant. The grant, the used oil grant, and she seemed pretty confident that it was coming in.
Okay, good.
Uh, so, um. Also, the Cove recycling program, I think. On our time sheets, we spend way too much time doing recycling and I'm not quite sure. How that's happening, but it needs to be curtailed and, um. Opening and closing the facility and make sureing it, making sure it's clean every day should not take more. Than forty-five minutes or an hour and, um. I'm, I'm just not sure that things are being, um, logged appropriately. With the, um, recycling program, we're way over budget and yet we've really streamlined. The whole service down there. So it doesn't really make sense that it's costing us a lot more to run. Yes.
So. If we had the, the gate where you went into park and the parking rates were determined about the amount of time you were in there. And there was a set minimum. Everybody that came down from out of the area with recycling would pay the set minimum, two bucks or whatever it is. To even get in there to dump. Dump the recycling. So that would go a long ways towards. To, or recouping some of the recycle. Costs because. All of the traffic that goes up and down and in and out. I, I could be wrong, but I think I actually had to pay parking at Handy Woods up in Anderson Valley. I mean, this isn't some.
Yeah.
Bizarre. I think that would. You know, I'm sure there's dozens and dozens of vehicles a week that would have to pay the minimum to drop off their recycling.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. And it is a great service.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a service for everybody. It's region wide, not just Point Arena. So to get back to how to save money on this stuff, I think we need to reduce the days that it's available. Reduce the time that's spent on them and, uh, like Jeff said, get a parking. Fee process going. Uh, anything else from anybody on recycling?
Uh, I'd like to say something. Uh, I think that the corporate yard thing that, that had been. Talked about there at the county yard and the, um. And the, what is it? The C R, what, what's the CRV is, is the term. So if, if we could put to, if, and I think that, that every, everyone, um. Other than the convenience of a reason to go down to the Cove, I think that a, a, a lot of the Cove people don't want to see recycling. At the Cove and I'm, I'm, I feel that way. And, uh, and then it's if it was at the corporate yard and had certain hours and, uh, and that, uh, money was being recouped. Through CRV, uh, I think that we should look into, uh, how we can lobby the county. To give us that space. We need the space anyway, and then it sort of frees us up for using some of the other spaces we have. Like the, uh, like the firehouse or, uh, what have you. So I think it should be a part of that bigger picture.
Okay, um, administration.
Uh, so administration, uh, do we reduce office hours to mornings only? Do we limit the number of projects that we're taking on? Um, through goal setting, uh, do we reduce staff hours? I would not recommend the latter because we already do not have enough hours in the day to do what you need to do. Part of the issue, um, around office hours in the morning only, um. I wouldn't say that's a cost saving directly, but that would allow us in the afternoons to have uninterrupted time. To complete work and projects we're working on. Part of the issue we have had in admin is there are only two of us. And people come in, people call, people have problems and we're here to help them, but. It makes it difficult for us to focus on specific things we need to focus on to finish. In the last couple of weeks, for example, we have closed the office. Uh, several times in the afternoon so that we are able to work on the FEMA funding issue. Uh, because that's something you could talk to Gina about that. That's not something that you can set aside for five minutes with a phone call and come right back to. Um, it's pretty in depth. So that would be the idea of, uh, reducing the hours for more efficiency of staff. On the projects that take time for us to work on.
You know, um, can I? One thing I was thinking of when, when you said that is about limiting hours in the day, maybe. To, uh, stagger the lunch hours of staff so that people who are working could come in during, uh, their lunch hour to time. So that they, there would still be availability of the office to those people. Might be something to consider.
We're looking at, um, if this, if we do this, it would be nine to one Monday through Thursday. Off Friday, so the afternoons would be closed to the public. Still here, but yeah.
I think it's better if you do two mornings and two afternoons. Because there's people who can't come because they're working until the afternoon. So I don't know, I would just kind of. Divide it up a little bit differently, yeah.
We don't know about that.
And limiting the number of projects, well, yes, at this point, you know, it takes money to make money type of thing, but we don't have any money to make. Projects with. So I think we really need to be super, super careful that anything we take on is something that's. Completely paid for by the grant or whatever the funding process is, but. You know, when we were looking at the capital improvements and doing, um, Mindy Hollow Road, when there's a match, I start to freak out. You know, I, we just don't have money for a match and even though it's really important to do these street projects. Um, it makes me really nervous. So I think we have to be super careful about what projects we take on. Not that we're not, I mean, we always are, but, um, they have to be self-funded. Okay, wastewater? We're talking about contracting out the services?
Yeah, can I speak your version? I seem to have lost my version of this.
Here.
Sorry, I don't like that dude. Uh, okay, so wastewater, um. Do we look at contracting out the service?
Would that really save money?
Well, so that's a question. When originally we looked at this several years ago when we lost our chief plan operator. Uh, the Community Services District, while our Community Services District came in, um, to backfill us for a couple of months. Wasn't cheap, wasn't exorbitant. I think today, given the, um. Personnel costs at the wastewater plant, it would be more competitive. We had talked about while our Community Services District. Providing the service like permanently at one point, uh, several years ago. I know Richard had that conversation. His determination was it didn't make fiscal sense to do that at the time. I will say that. I, I've always wondered exactly how much work there is to do at the wastewater plant, being completely frank. Um, when we had the Community Services District there for a couple of months, we had two operators. They came in in the morning for two to three hours and that was it. And our plant survived and we were still functioning. So again, when you're talking about personnel costs. Uh, personnel at the wastewater plant are costlier than other members of the staff. And for the amount of work getting done, I'm not convinced that. As many hours that are expended at the wastewater plant need to be expended there.
Can we take a look at a contracting service and see what it would cost?
Yeah.
And if we, if we contract out, then we don't have to pay benefits and all that stuff too. So, something to, to look at. Anybody else? Wastewater?
Well, I like the idea of contracting that. It makes sense, it makes sense, you know, we, um, it makes sense.
Okay, personnel.
Yeah, this is the difficult one. Uh, just a few questions to ask, um. Whether we per, furlough our employees for a set period of time, what that would mean is just a reduction in, a, a day's reduction in hours. Or do we lay off an employee altogether? Um, and have one less staff member, one less expense of healthcare and other things that could build up. Over time, saving that money. Um, do we reduce everybody to part-time? It's not something that I think anybody really wants to do, but I will say if everybody was part-time, we wouldn't have, uh, healthcare benefit expense, which. Is about sixty thousand dollars a year at this point. Um, and. Do we reduce benefits for a period of time? Do we stop the IRA contribution, our match to the IRA contribution for a period of time? Do we stop, um, funding our HSA payment, which employees get every year for medical expenses above. You know, what our insurance covers. Those are all things that I have looked at, um, going through the budget. And. We've worked really hard to get our staff up to a competitive wage in this area. Um, our staff does very well, in my opinion, with wages and benefits. Everybody earns about total compensation about fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, so that's an expense for eight people. Um, it's something to think about. I. Not a big fan of layoffs, furloughs, but we are looking at a situation where. Efficiency is really important and what I would say is that I'm not convinced the efficiency of our staff. Is supporting the amount of hours that we are expending.
Well, I'll dive in. Um, I do believe we need to lay off an employee on our streets. Um, back in the day, Marty Hill scan was our sole street employee. He kept this place sparkling clean by himself. Now, I don't know how many hours he spent a week, but, um. He did it by himself and he did a great job. Uh, I also think, just like peer employees, we need to limit the hours. Of street employees or employee to twenty-five hours a week. And we need to. Just save money on our, on our personnel costs.
I agree with Barbara and that. I think we do need to address the personnel cost drastically. But it, it's a tough one to do. But I think it's something we really need to address.
I would do both.
I think I'd do both, yeah, I agree.
I have a question. So you said there were eight employees on staff? How many are those, including the people at the wastewater? How many people are at the wastewater plant?
Two.
Two. Okay, let me, can I ask a further question? So I've noticed driving into town, there's a guy cleaning the weeds on the sidewalk. Is that a city employee?
That is somebody doing their community service.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we can't hear you.
That's someone doing the community service work.
And Jennifer has something in the chat?
Excuse me, she's, Jennifer's asking who's in charge of seeking grants, particularly a grant to modernize the wastewater treatment plant. Um, she followed up with training needs to happen. The city is responsible for making sure employees know what the expectations are.
That was a long question. I lost, I lost track. Who's in charge of grants?
Yes.
That's kind of we piecemeal it, right? I mean, whoever wants to take one on. Like right now, I am taking on the composting grant with, um, our compostologists who have stepped up. Um, and Kathleen Chacy volunteered to do the, um, Working Waterfronts Grant. But we do not have a grant writer on staff, uh, nor can we afford one. So we just kind of cobble it together. And then what was the second half of the question?
It, it was more of a comment that training needs to happen. City is responsible for making sure employees know what the expectations are.
Oh, yeah. Um, that's true. Uh, okay, anything else on personnel?
Just, just a thought about the, uh, the structure of if eight employees dropping an employee. Uh, is there a way to, um. Staying with, with the part-time concept and being able to, uh, shuffle all of the employees into different, uh, different departments. I'm not, not necessarily all of them, but, but, uh, is, is, is there an efficiency there?
That has been something we've been attempting to do is expand everybody's training, so. People know how to start the generator, uh, people can fill in at the pier, people could fill in at streets. We want everybody to be cross-trained. So that if somebody's out, and this is really important, when if somebody's out, there's somebody else that can backfill that. Sometimes that's not the case. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yes, thanks.
Another question. Do we have a, a, a job description?
Yes, we have job descriptions for each job.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody there? Anyone else? Should we move on?
Uh, just one question, yeah, quick. The idea of reducing everyone to part-time to save on the healthcare. Given, I don't understand the whole. You know, Cal, MedCal or however. Would, would, would the, would everyone actually lose their health benefits given? The benefits that they would maybe receive.
Well, I, I'd venture to say that our salary or our, our wages are above what would be. What would allow you to go on MedCal.
Okay.
And so if people lost their healthcare benefit here, which is questionable because of, uh. The ACA law, I'd have to look into that, but if they lost their healthcare here. They'd have to go into the Obamacare market, basically, to find their healthcare. Cause it's a requirement now that everybody has some form of healthcare, whether it's provided by the employer or the individual. So that would be the, you'd be. People would need to be covered either way. It would just not be on us, but. What I will say also about the healthcare benefits is that we pay one hundred percent of the benefit. And that is a substantial amount of money and there are very few municipalities or counties that do that anymore. There's usually a cost share. Of like twenty to twenty-five percent that the employee pays and pays that and the employer pays the rest.
I, I think that might be something to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up, Joe. Okay, my favorite one, sales tax. All right.
Yeah, do we place the general sales tax measure on the November twenty twenty-four ballot?
That we do.
Yes, we do, yeah. Catch up with the rest of the county and the areas.
So. That would be something that we would put on the ballot as the council. Uh, we'll reach out to Katrina at the county to get. What their timeline is. Uh, we miss, we've missed the timeline for the March election, um. And that's too soon anyway, I think. I guess, coming back, we'll come back to this later, but whether the option would be to do a general. Tax that would fund the general fund that you only need fifty percent to pass. Or if you would have a specific place that you're assigning that money. Like at the pier or et cetera. And then that, that would require.
That'd be crazy. Be really difficult to administer too. It seems.
I have a, a comic question. Is that true what Anna had said about, uh. The rest of the, rest of the county having a greater sales tax than Point Arena?
Yeah, the municipalities have, uh, actually the counties is lower than ours. Um, for whatever reason, but the Willet, Sport Bragg and Yukaya are all, uh, pushing nine percent. We're at eight, three, seven, five. I think they're at eight, nine, seven, five or eight, eight, seven, five, eight, eight, seven, five. And Willet's is almost at nine. So, yeah, we have room to ask for more money.
So, Sonoma County is nine percent. So Sonoma County is nine percent. Much of it is nine, nine percent. So.
And that is actually the max that you can go to, right?
Cities, now municipal counties are ten percent.
Wow.
Okay.
Okay, so I will explore that. And bring back something early next year.
That would be great, yeah.
Um, so another question about the ele- election cycles. Uh, is is there a um? Uh, election in the, in June for presidential candidates or where where are we in the, is there a June election?
I believe it's a March.
Well, that's one.
Presidential?
That's the, yeah, presidential primary.
Oh, primary, oh.
Too soon.
Not the presidential. So, um. And Joe, are you familiar with the California Bank of Commerce? They're a banking institution that specializes in serving special districts and municipalities. And they don't charge any fees. Or banking with them. And um, they uh have a really good track record and um they're based in Sacramento. That's kind of a drawback, but um. That we're looking at, well, we're going to use them for the Mendocino Coast Parks and Rec Department. Um, and um, I don't know if they want us as a customer because of the financial situation we're in. But they might be a better banking institution for us than Redwood Credit. Just because they specialize in municipalities.
Well, it could be a drawback too.
Yeah.
Because they're not local.
Right.
So. So they're, well, I don't know if they're. If they're a state-chartered bank or if they're actually part of the state. Know the state was talking about. Or I mean, its own bank for primarily for the cannabis industry because. They couldn't um. Participate with other banks in the state of California. Because of restrictions. Um, so. So like, I'm not familiar with them, but I could, you know. Uh, you would like me to, I can take a look at it and see if it would be reasonable to transfer.
Yeah, well, I have some paperwork I could bring you, you don't.
Yeah, the. The biggest thing with any banking institution, you develop a relationship with the local bank and. They're more lenient on rates than a lot of things that. An out-of-area bank may not.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, even if they specialize in in government agencies and that kind of thing, that just means they know the rules.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Could be more restricted.
So. So it could, it could be that. That they might be more aware of what the requirements are for deposits and that kind of thing, but. Would not necessarily be advantageous to the city. Um. And and just as an aside, I've worked with a lot of banks in California and. Their local government areas. Um. And. Typically, what they do is they pool all the government funds into one pool. And then they sell that pool to other banks.
I I don't think that's what these guys do, but let's look into it.
Yeah, but that's.
Check them out.
That's usually how they operate.
Yeah.
Is is they, because they consider those funds to be. Very solid funds.
Hmm.
And and that way, they can charge a a premium. To other banks, so it's part of their lending practices and their interbank um. Uh, setup, but yeah, I. If you would want me to take a look at it, can um. I, my, my gut is saying that probably wouldn't be a good idea right now. I mean, you you have an account with the local agency investment fund. Um, and and that's usually um. With with things like that, anytime you change banks, you have to look at liquidity. And how liquid are the funds? You know, you send money, you have a bank account, if everything's done over, you know, the. Clearinghouse type of thing with checks and that kind of thing. It would probably operate the same way. But you have to think about deposits and how you're gonna get the deposits to them.
Yeah, they have all kinds of ways to do that on.
Yeah, I mean, I've I've seen the. The auto deposit mechanisms that they have for businesses and that kind of stuff. I'm sure they have similar things for cities, government agencies. But um, no, it it's um a little closer to Sacramento too, so. You don't want Sacramento having all the funds.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll bring you what I have and you can take a look at it.
Yeah, sure.
Make an assessment.
Mm-hmm.
Just an idea. Just trying to find ways to save money. Okay, anything else tonight? I hope not.
Do you have anything else?
Um. There were a couple of comments in in particular about grants um that um. Essentially, it's a good idea to always to look at grants as part of. Of any like project activity and those types of things. Um, operational types of grants are few and far between. I mean, you. Typically, the only operational type of grants that you could find are at the state level. Um, there are local um. Potentially, there might be foundations type of grants and those types of things. You know, with the um. The foundation, the community foundation and Mendocino, um. So, so there might be those types of things that you could research um. For additional funding sources. I know. Um, the community foundation had grants for like the fires. They may have had something for the storms. To help supplement the FEMA program. Um, there's um. Uh, if you're talking about. Uh, for the wastewater facility, I have seen um solar projects um yet. Uh, kind of filtered into those programs. Um, as part of the the project specifications. So that typically is secondary funding to the major construction grant. That you're gonna be using money for. And if you're using like state water resource grants and that kind of thing. Typically, they would have their own grant that you would write for solar. To um, to include that component. So, so there are, there are things that you can do in that realm, but. Being in the position that we are now, it's hard to go for more grants where you have to put out more money. And not, you know, it. It would be great if they were all like the composting grant where you got the money ahead of time. Um. But, but they're not, and and so. There might be something out there that you could look at. I mean, it doesn't hurt to do the research and see if you can find something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, that doesn't hurt to look at that. The other comment I had is is there was a a comment made about the businesses paying a fee to help. The pier.
That's called a business license.
Right, but there's also um. Uh, it's called the Business Improvement District. And and you could look into establishing a Business Improvement District. And that's typically run by the downtown businesses. It's not usually run by the city. Um, and they establish the assessments and what they want to do and that helps the city. In terms of making it a destination spot.
We already belong to the County Business Improvement District. So I think doing an overlay of another one is asking a lot.
Uh, I don't think it's the same thing.
Yeah, well, this uh Business Improvement District that is at the countywide one. Visit Mendocino is the.
Okay, they're not a Business Improvement District.
Yeah, that's what they're called.
Three, so, so it's not um, it's not.
They receive funding.
They're. Right, they receive funding through the the transient occupancy tax.
Right, so only lodging pays.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could have one where every business in Point Arena.
Yeah, so so their their piece isn't, isn't what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Because these types of Business Improvement Districts are specifically run, they're like downtown business associations.
Mm-hmm.
That run them. And and that way, you know, the city has a say in what they do.
More autonomy.
But they, uh, the businesses have more control over what happens downtown.
Yeah.
And that typically is more helpful to the community as a whole. And and so there might be um something there that you could look at too.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, we have a merchants as- merchants association that's really active.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And we generate a fair amount of membership dues uh that fund what we do to promote. Uh, Point Arena.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And it could. Possibly support an overlay that would. Fund things like the Cove. Area, but it would be a real stretch.
Yeah.
You know, like, it would take a lot of.
Well, yeah.
Massaging.
Right, but there there are these um, they're they're called public-private partnerships.
Mm-hmm.
And you can do like specific jobs or specific projects or, you know. Versus uh specific activity that um. Uh, you partner with the businesses in the area and they help you execute it. And it's. Those projects are typically cheaper and the city gives the businesses a break like on business taxes or. Could be the T O T tax or whatever, if you were to go with Wharf Masters. Since they're down there, you know, they might have an interest in helping you develop the. To a multi-activity type of thing.
But if we give them a tax break, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot at the city.
Not necessarily, because you're gonna be bringing in more tax dollars overall. So for a short-term reduction in the T O T, you might have a long-term gain overall.
You mean like with a specific project reduction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting. I was also thinking about maybe a slight increase in business license fees.
We increased some. We increased some when we did the fee schedule.
Uh, okay, okay.
Uh, yeah, I still think our business licenses are way cheap compared to other jurisdictions, but, you know, whatever.
But it encourages people to pay them.
Yes, it does. Um, all right, anything else tonight, y'all? Public, anybody? If not, I'm gonna adjourn us at eight twenty-five. Thank you, everyone, for attending and for participating. Was very, very informative and interesting and we'll have an update on where we're going, all right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.